Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Paranola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Showcase?
Good evening, everyone. It's our favorite time of the month again. We're going to be celebrating our students and staff members of the month. I would like our elementary principals to come up and begin the process. Thank you.
Hello? All right. Good evening. I'm Rob Valente, principal of Huber Street School. I have two students to speak about tonight. The January student of the month and the February student of the month. I'm going to begin with January. The Huber Street School Student of the Month for January is third grader Victoria Jennings. Simply put, Victoria is the kind of person that each and every one of us strive to be. She is sincere, sweet, and she shows a genuine interest in everyone around her. Victoria treats everyone around her as if they were her closest friend, whether it's a new student, a teacher, or even the principal. Every one of us is her best friend, and there is nothing contrived or phony about it. She is just that sweet. Her kindness wills those around her to be kind. When I met with Victoria's teacher, Mrs. Viera simply said, "Victoria has a magnetic personality." Nothing could be truer. It is simply impossible not to like her. It is my absolute sincere pleasure to introduce to all of you the Huber Street School Student of the Month for January, third grader Victoria Jennings. Okay. The February student of the month comes from a pre-K class in the Milrig School. This young lady embodies the very essence of kindness, compassion, and dedication to others. With a heart as pure as gold, Ivy Namendorf consistently goes above and beyond to extend a helping hand to her classmates and teachers alike. Whether it is lending crayons to a classmate or helping Mrs. Rivera clean the classroom after an activity, Ivy is the first to jump in to help. When asking Mrs. Rivera about Ivy, she couldn't contain her pride. I cannot do an impression of Mrs. Rivera, but it went something like this, "Oh, she is so wonderful." So please join me in honoring a truly wonderful pre-kindergartner as the Milrig School February Student of the Month, Ivy Namendorf. Congratulations, Victoria. Huber Street School is lucky to have some amazing teachers in our classrooms. People whose passion for helping students is palpable. People who stop at nothing to have their students exceed their goals. People who perfectly blend old-school values with new-school methods and technologies. Nobody embodies what I just described more aptly than third-grade teacher Cindy Viera. Mrs. Viera treats every student like they are her own child. She sets high expectations for them and does everything she can to become the best versions of themselves. Cindy is beloved by her students, respected by her peers, requested every spring by parents, and valued by her administrators more than she knows. It is my pleasure to announce the February Teacher of the Month for Huber Street School, Mrs. Cindy Viera.
Our Student of the Month award goes to a young man who was described by his former teacher as, quote, "A kind and generous soul since he was in kindergarten." In speaking to more staff members about him, it is clear that nothing has changed in all these years. He is now a fifth grader who is always ready to be generous, compassionate, and thoughtful friend to his classmates. He is always respectful and eager to be helpful to our staff and teachers. In our school's chorus and drama club, he shines, willing to embrace additional roles and responsibilities with great enthusiasm and dedication. He can always be counted on to help guide his peers and put his whole heart into the task at hand. Music and theater by nature are collaborative arts, and this honor goes to someone who embodies the true spirit of being part of a creative team. Congratulations to Tyler Vega, Claritin Student of the Month.
In the realm of special education, our Staff Member of the Month is called upon each day to embody patience, resilience, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to every student's unique journey. She works tirelessly in and out of the classroom to create a safe, inclusive, and nurturing environment where her children are able to develop a sense of belonging. She has risen to every challenge she's been presented with, displaying incredible flexibility and poise under pressure. She is always advocating for her students and their families, and I know how much her open communication and love for their children means to our parents. We are so lucky to have her now at Claritin School. Congratulations, Ms. Nicole Danker. We appreciate you very much.
Good evening. Tonight I have the pleasure of announcing the Seacaucus Middle School February Staff Member and Student of the Month. Congratulations to Alyssa Lee for being selected as the Seacaucus Middle School February Student of the Month. This recognition is a testament of her exceptional dedication and commitment to supporting her peers. As an eighth grader, Alyssa has truly set an example for others. Alyssa's ability to go above and beyond is commendable and serves as an inspiration to the entire middle school community. Alyssa's willingness to lend a helping hand not only showcases how she values education, but also highlights her outstanding character and leadership qualities. Alyssa's contributions have made a positive impact on her peers, fostering a supportive learning environment. When speaking with several of the students Alyssa works with after school, the common factor has been how well Alyssa explains the assignments and expectations during tutoring. Her tutoring sessions are supposed to last 30 minutes, and Alyssa makes sure to keep every single student there for an hour. Keep up the fantastic work and continue to make a difference in the lives of those around you. We really, truly appreciate you and is so deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Alyssa, again. It is with great pleasure to spotlight Ms. Elena Walker as the Seacaucus Middle School February Staff Member of the Month. Ms. Walker not only excels in her own classroom, but it goes above and beyond to support her colleagues in their professional growth. When you walk in Ms. Walker's classroom, you'll be captivated by her engaging and innovative lessons tailored to meet the diverse needs of our students. She consistently demonstrates best practices, but what truly sets her apart is her willingness to share her expertise with others. Ms. Walker opens her classroom door to colleagues to observe model lessons and ask questions. She's also been given the opportunity to observe lessons and provide constructive feedback and encouragement, helping her peers to redefine their own teaching practices and enhance their student learning outcomes. Ms. Walker also fosters a culture of collaboration where our newer teachers feel empowered to take risks in the classroom. Your commitment to supporting your colleagues and your dedication to excellence in teaching is truly inspiring. Thank you for everything that you do to enrich the lives of our students. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Walker on this well-deserved recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Mia Cruz is the High School Student of the Month. She's also the basketball co-captain, which means she's not here tonight because she's playing in the county semifinals game. So we wish them the best of luck, and we'd like to recognize her at the March meeting. Now, our Staff Member of the Month is Mrs. Helen Boccaluppo. Ms. B. has worked in the field of education since 1977 and has been a guidance counselor at Seacaucus High School since 2006. Ms. B. is one of the first employees in the door each morning, ready to take on the day. She has a passion for school counseling, for college planning, and is determined in helping students achieve academically, socially, and emotionally. She is one of the few people who get very excited about designing the master schedule and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Ms. B. is co-advisor to the National Honor Society. She helps to arrange peer tutoring, fundraising events, scholarship nights, and scholarship fundraising events, and many other community service outings which require late nights. We are extremely grateful for Ms. B.'s service to our students in our entire high school. Ms. B., congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations to everyone. Student representative?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been well since our last meeting. Recently, there have been some exciting events happening at the high school. For starters, our girls varsity basketball team has been crowned NJIC Champions of their league, and they've worked extremely hard this season through all their games and practices, and the hard work has paid off. Currently, as Mr. Vigiani just said, they are playing in their county tournament, so wish them the best of luck. For indoor track, we have a junior, Yusef Abada, who is competing in groups this weekend in Toms River, so also wish him luck. And wish our bowling team luck because they made it through their first round of states and will go on to play Warren Tech this upcoming Tuesday. With the rest of that, our winter sports have been running very smoothly, which have also come to an end, which leaves students very excited for their spring sports coming up. The Spring Musical for Adams Family has had its Valentine's Day-themed concert this past weekend and raised a good amount of money that will help with the show's production. Along with that, our JSA has its annual Winter Congress trip tomorrow to Washington, D.C., and will last the entire weekend with students working hard on their bills and debating skills. They're very excited to go. Finally, I just have one request that I would like to bring to your attention. The Foreign Language Honor Society is planning a field trip to celebrate their senior members by traveling to the National Museum of the American Indian. This field trip would be educational by learning about American Indian evolution and culture. This knowledge provides context to the greater understanding of world history and language. Along with this, the field trip would educate our members about how the Spanish language has an influence on indigenous people in South and North America. The museum is free, and all Foreign Language Honor Society is seeking is transportation and funding to and from the museum to go out to Italy after the tour concludes as a way to highlight Italian culture, as Italian language is taken by some of our members. If you could provide these resources, it would be greatly appreciated by the Foreign Language Honor Society. That is all. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Paige. If you can get us that information? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to invite Ms. Goldsack up to do her presentation.
Good evening. I am Carrie Goldsack. I'm the supervisor of Special Services for the district. I am here tonight to present to you about inclusion. So inclusion has been a topic that has kind of, for lack of better words, sparkled out into this year. It's been something that's been around forever, but for whatever reason, this year it's become a pretty hot topic. So what is inclusive education? So inclusive education is a set of evidence-based practices that, when implemented important with fidelity, supports all learners. The goal of inclusive education is to ensure that all students with and without disabilities receive individualized supports and services to enjoy equitable access to and participation in the general education classroom and reciprocal social relationships. So I know that was fully loaded, and I will further explain. So when people hear inclusion, they think, "Let's take some students with IEPs, and let's take some general education students, and let's place them in the same classroom." Well, an inclusive atmosphere is there for all students regardless of ability. Everyone belongs there, and everyone can learn there. So how can Special Services support general education students? Well, they provide specifically designed instruction and support for all students, not only those identified as having disabilities. So this is really important to kind of wrap our heads around. It's not, "That's the inclusion class." It is, "That is the class that is supported by Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so co-teaching together." So New Jersey ranks second in the nation for education, which is a pretty great stat to have. The 80% stands for the amount of time that a special needs student should be spending in a general education classroom. And as you can see, from 1995, we have not changed. We have not, as a state, increased that number, whereas other states such as Connecticut, Maryland, Virginia have. Additionally, the U.S. average, it blows us out of the water pretty much. So it's important I'm here tonight to kind of change our deficit mindset. It's not about what a child can't do. It's about what a child can do and really move us into a growth mindset. So when we modify curriculum, we provide equitable instruction that means all students are successful. So I love this graphic because it really shows the difference between equality and equity, and that is something that is difficult to explain, but when you see it in a graphic, it makes total sense. So equity is giving all students what they need, meeting them at their level, in an effort to have them be successful. When you provide equality, you give everybody the same thing across the board, you're going to have students that are left out. So some common misconceptions that we've heard, "Special education, it's a place." That's the special education room. That is a special education student. Inclusion exceptions can be made for special students. But if a student has an IEP, a special education teacher must only teach that student. That is not the case in our district. So the beauty of inclusion is that all students can receive supports to meet them at their levels and provide them the supports that they need to be successful. So there's tons of studies out there, but this is one of the really nice studies that I found. So inclusive classrooms are beneficial for all students, not only students with disabilities. I'd like to preface this study with, I want everybody to just think about their upbringing. Think about you in a classroom. Think about your child in a classroom. We are human. We are not 100% at anything. We have strengths and we have weaknesses, and that's what makes us all special. So think about something that your child has done exceptionally well, and then think of somewhere that your child has really had a weakness or something that they really just struggled with. Inclusion is a great way to get your child with or without an IEP the support that they need to be successful in all of those areas. So one of the benefits of inclusion is peer modeling. So when you have a student, general ed, special ed, doesn't matter, in a classroom, some people learn best through talking. They learn best through teaching others. And oftentimes, in a general education classroom, those are your chatterbox students, right? Those are your students that you're saying, "Shh, you have to be quiet. You can't keep talking." But if you pair them with somebody who needs the support and they need a peer model to talk through with them, that's a great team, and that is a beneficial way for everybody to learn. So I know that this is small, and I apologize. I believe we'll post it on the website so everybody can see. The increase is that 11 out of 12 categories for peer models were successful, whereas 10 of 12 for a teacher-led classroom. So that just proves that students, sometimes they're intimidated by a teacher, right? Think Charlie Brown, the wah-wah-wah. When you pair one of those students who is really intimidated by an adult and you pair them with a peer, they tend to be more successful. So a potential redistricting would lead us to a program expansion for our life skills program. The self-contained classes, they would be a more life skills-based class, and that could also be done through peer modeling, which, again, I'll get into. Students will become active members of their grade-level community and participate in grade-level activities. Unfortunately, sometimes the schedules don't align, and then you have special needs students who are missing out on things like at the elementary school birthday parties, or activities, or theme days. And it's really disheartening to see the looks of disappointment on those students' faces when those schedules just don't align. For targeted support, you can increase the support of all students, and this is just a win all around. General education students and teachers also benefit by receiving additional academic support within the classroom. When I was a teacher in the district, I often, as a special education teacher, had some of my general education teacher peers approach me and say, "I have a student. He's really struggling with this. Do you have anything that might be helpful?" When you allow common planning time, when you allow common professional development among grade levels, it really can benefit not just the teachers and the staff, but the students as well. Additionally, students of all abilities will have the opportunities to grow with peer models. It just increases compassion, empathy, and a willingness to assist those in need. So right now, our Huber Street students don't have that exposure because right now the self-contained classes are all located at Claritin, so they don't have that same exposure for compassion. I'm not saying they're not compassionate. I'm just saying that they are not exposed to the students in those classrooms. It invests in the school and educator capacity, so teachers have expressed concerns. They don't feel supported. Oftentimes, we have a student who will move out of a special ed classroom and into a general education classroom, and there is somewhat of a gap there academically, and the general education teacher does not feel supported. That's really a detriment, and we need to do better to help them. Increase shared professional development opportunities. The more intensive grade-appropriate supports can be put into place for all students. So for example, Orton-Gillingham is a K-2 multisensory phonics program. That is something that's beneficial for all students because everybody learns differently, and Orton-Gillingham really touches upon all those bases. When you have students who are grade-banned, you are then able to really focus those skills on those students. But for a testing grade, you could implement something like a study group for standardized testing. Things that we weren't able to offer prior, this would allow for from a Special Services perspective. Combining grade levels from schools will allow for more staff to adequately assist where needed. So oftentimes, there's no collaboration between the general education teachers and the special education teachers, just do nothing more than to schedule constraints. And now we are asking them to kind of find each other in the hallway and talk after hours and call each other on the phone, and that's not fair to ask of them either. I've listed- I've listed some websites as well, so when this goes up on the website, you can kind of read up on, there's some studies here, there's the NJ.gov, IDEA law, things like that. And then this is the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education, and they have come, they are on the Senate floor, they are advocating. This is something that is a benefit and a win for all of our students and all of our staff, and I cannot speak highly enough about inclusive education. So I appreciate your time. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsack. Superintendent's report? Correspondents?
No correspondents.
Superintendent, report?
Good evening, everyone. As you are aware, we have been rigorously developing a redistricting initiative aimed at maximizing resources and opportunities for every student. Your input as vital members of our community has been essential in shaping this initiative. In keeping our commitment to transparent, community-centric leadership, we are excited to announce several important updates. Annalizing the community's requests for more time to adjust and prepare for our redistrict initiative, we have chosen to postpone the projected start date. This is not a delay, but a response from the board and myself showing that we have listened to all of you, and again, thank you for all your communication that you've been sending to us. The revised date for implementation will be September of 2025. We are also establishing a diverse multi-stakeholder committee composed of two administrators, two teachers, two mental health professionals, two parents, and two board members. The committee is scheduled to meet either monthly or every other month as needed. That'll be decided by the committee, ensuring thorough coverage of every detail and query before the school year begins of September 2025. We are in the process of developing a Google form that'll be sent out in the next week or so, and we encourage all families who are interested in being part of this committee to please submit the Google form, and then we'll be in contact. Moreover, I would like to address the concerns raised during last month's meeting and through various communications. Board members and I have been in discussions with the mayor and town council members to consider expansion options for our elementary schools. We are looking over details and aim to present a plan at the upcoming meeting next month. Additionally, as noted in our January 5th board meeting agenda, we have submitted an application to the NJ DOE for full-day pre-K services. If approved, we will be offering full-day pre-K through a lottery system for our families. We are awaiting a response, and will inform all families once we receive information from Trenton. And I've said it countless times, that was part of my address when I first came into C-Caucus, every single thing we do, the well-being and success of our students is at the forefront of our thoughts and our actions. We are confident of our decisions, whether large or small, we will maintain a rigorous attention to detail and careful consideration in all that we do. So I'd like to again, thank all families for coming out, for expressing their concerns, their support, whatever their opinions are. We are definitely taking them into consideration, and we're going to be moving accordingly. And as far as our HIB? So as far as our HIB reports from December 15, 2023 through January 18, 2024, we have zero reports from Claritin School, one report from Huber Street School confirmed. We have zero reports from C-Caucus Middle School and two reports from C-Caucus High School, which were confirmed. And we have an additional to add on, which is we resolved to affirm HIB number 256904 at Huber Street on 12/15/2023.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings as reported by the superintendent and are available at the administrative offices for review.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms.
We'll be talking about our student safety data system reporting from period one, which is September 6, 2023 through December 31, 2023. So these are different categories as far as we do our reporting for our schools. So in regards to incidents that were either violence, vandalism, substances, or HIBs confirmed, the total number throughout the district was 18. As far as violence, we had seven incidents throughout the district. Vandalism, we had one. Substances, we had five. Weapons, we had two. HIB confirms was four. HIB alleged was 12. Restraint and seclusion was one. We had five HIB trainings throughout the district, and we had eight different HIB programs throughout the district as well.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the student safety data system reported by the acting superintendent.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Business administrator, board secretary, report?
Yes. Tonight, under governance, we will be adding Resolution R. 1.22, approval of a sidebar agreement between the C-Caucus Board of Education and the C-Caucus Education Association to waive Article 8, Section 8 for the 2425 school year and agree to the teacher's school year starting Tuesday, September 3, 2024, one day after Labor Day. Under finance, we will be adding Resolution R. 5.14, approval of an agreement with It's a New Day LLC. And finally, at our March and April board meetings of 2023, the board approved a refunding school bond ordinance providing for the refunding of all or a portion of its outstanding school bonds dated July 16, 2014. On January 23, 2024, the bond went out to call, and I am happy to announce tomorrow, February 16, we will be closing on the refunding of the bond, and this has produced a gross savings of $933,000 over the next 10-year period. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Public forum? No. Governance?
Under policy, we modified policies for graduation requirements and other policies. Governance, we spoke about approving several positions and job descriptions and also spoke about the next school year's district calendar. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 1.01 through R. 1.22 and Motion M. 1.01.
Second.
Call the roll. Oh, discussion? I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Under policy, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 2.01 through R. 2.03.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education?
Good evening. During our education committee, we had the opportunity to view Ms. Goldsack's excellent presentation regarding the special education projections and planning. The committee was also informed that there are professional development opportunities available through the Hudson County Consortium. We will be sending teachers so they can turn key information to our staff. Our STEM supervisor, Dylan Caruso, is working with Rutgers on a program that Rutgers is fully funding to better implement our computer science curriculum with our middle school. The partnership will help developing a more streamlined approach to computer science in eighth grade. This in turn will support our students prior to high school, where they will have the ability to learn more about the computer science component of the, at the AP level. Dr. Afonso also provided an update on our Ramapo College partnership. The TA-to-teacher and the master's leadership programs will be launched in May, excuse me. Ramapo will also be offering a dual enrollment program, which will be available to our high school seniors. We would like to say congratulations to Carrie Goldsack and Felicia Lott for presenting at the New Teacher Academy. They presented strategies to help differentiate instruction with different student needs. And finally, we approved several field trips across all grade levels. I'd like to accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 3.01 through R. 3.02 as described below for the following.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Special services? Nothing. Operations? Finance?
During the operations meeting for the month, the committee discussed the following. The school dudes, we continue to get updates on the school dudes work order system, and we're updated that for the month of January, 220 work orders were submitted for all district schools, of which 197 work orders had been completed and 23 remain open, with the majority being focused in the middle school and the high school. We had some security-related updates on the cameras. The board is always actively reviewing security-related items within our school district and has received updates on the security-related upgrades being done within the district. In terms of the camera installation project, the camera installations around the high school football field have been installed, and Mr. Shioffi is working with the respective parties on minor adjustments with the camera views to ensure all areas are being monitored properly. We also had some updates on access and security concerns that we have been receiving at both the middle school, high school, and elementary schools. It has been brought to our attention of the board and the superintendent that students have been opening restricted doors to let other students in the building to retrieve Uber Eats orders or to come into the school, particularly in the middle school and the high school. Mr. Shioffi spoke with the principals regarding the occurrences and the panic bars and alarms have been installed on the restricted doors that will sound if opened. We also had been told that there was one incident at one of the elementary schools where a restricted door was open and someone was let in through one of those restricted doors. I think it is a very important point to point out that safety of our children and our staff members are our number-one priority of our board. The board is constantly reviewing security-related items and acting on security concerns brought to our attention to make certain that our children are in school and they are protected and safe. Complacency and obeying security-related policies and procedures can lead to students and teachers becoming national crime statistics, and our board will always make the proper decision to prevent that from happening in our district. Over the course of the next few months, additional security-related policies will be reviewed to see if any additional measures need to be amended. The Claritin School generator, which has been a hot topic for quite some time now, it was supposed to be installed last month during the meeting, but we had some issues that needed to be rectified, technical issues with the installation. So now the generator is scheduled to be installed February 16. Once the generator is installed, all the proper testing will take place, and it's estimated that it'll be fully operational by the spring. On the finance committee side, we discussed the approval of the greater venture trip for the senior class, the approval of additional nursing agreements. The district auditor came in and presented the committee and the superintendent with the 2023, 2022, 2023 audit and findings. The audit received an unmodified opinion, which expresses that the auditors conclude that the financial statements are presented fairly in a material respect and in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. The auditor did present three audit recommendations, that the business administrator has prepared a corrective action plan that will be presented for approval with the audit tonight. And I would like to use this time to thank Grace also for her hard work with the savings on the bond refunding. I would like to ask the committee to accept the recommendations of the business administrator, board secretary to approve and adopt Resolution R. 5.01 through R. 5.14 as described below.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
For our safety in buildings and grounds, I would like to ask the board to accept the recommendations of the business administrator, board secretary to approve and adopt Resolution R. 6.01 as described below.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Committees, I don't believe there are any committee reports this evening. Public forum?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the C-Caucus School District. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and are directly related to the operation of the C-Caucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in the light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue. And I believe that anyone wishing to address the board will be limited to three minutes. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor Mike Gennelli?
Do we want to turn that around for him? Speak to us? Yeah, we need to turn it around. Yeah. Okay, okay. Thank you.
My pleasure. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to thank you for what you did, Eric. You made everybody aware of what's going to happen, and I really appreciate you and the board for what you did. There's a couple of other things I want to speak about, though. When you talk about overcrowding, are the schools really overcrowded? We have the same number of kids in schools we had five, six years ago. I realize in 2027, 28, there'll be more kids through exchange being built. But in my office that day, we called exchange just to find out what construction is starting. They told me it's three, four years away, so we have some time. I think time is the thing we have to really have on our side here. We have time. You know, with the redistricting, I'd like you to add, if you could, two more people. I want to have two people of my governing body on that board, all right?[1742.33] So I'd like to see us work together, have more meetings together. You know, over the last meetings we had, you know, some things I found about last minute. In Hudson County, mayors don't find about things in last minute, you know. This is C-Caucus, so we do, but, you know, last minute's not good for me to find out that stuff is going on. I really have to know soon. What it affects the town as a whole. You know, I try my best to keep taxes down. We're going to do it again this year, and I know your taxes go up every year, but there's nothing you can do about that. But a referendum and a referendum to increase your budget is going to be something that people really can't deal with. Senior citizens, people don't have kids in school, so it's something we have to really address. And if we work together, we can address that, Kelly, as long as we work together. All right, just keep that on your mind. Just keep that on your mind. We have to work together, we have to be a team, just on stuff that affects the town as a whole. I don't get involved with board of ed stuff at all, I really don't. I've never called anybody here about hiring a teacher and nothing like that at all, but when it affects the town as a whole, I have to get involved. You know, and taxes are the number-one issue. I try my best to keep taxes stable, and we're going to do it again this year. And, you know, I really work hard at it. So on behalf of myself and the council, we want to work with you guys. Please work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say in response to that, Mayor, that on behalf of myself and the board and Dr. Alfonso, we also want to work together with you. So I think working together, we will do great things together. So thank you for speaking, thank you for coming. Next speaker, and I'm sorry if I pronounce your name wrong, Ashley Dagastar? Did I say it right? Okay.
How are you guys? This is my first board meeting. My daughter is only three, so I'm getting an early start because I know it matters. I went to Claritin, I went to middle school here, and I went to high school here. So I'm very familiar with the school. I do have a couple of questions. I do know that some of these may have been answered in previous times. Again, this is my first time, so forgive me. I just wanted to know, I understand that, you know, you guys are going to be redistricting and all that, but I wanted to know how long it would take to have a new building, and if they had an idea of where they were planning to build that building? Because again, a lot of people move according to a school, you know, like my mom moved here for Claritin, for example. So that's something that I was just hoping you guys would be able to give me some insight on. Also, I hope I don't offend anybody here. Middle school was absolutely beautiful here, I loved it, but it was seventh, eighth grade at the time. I'm a little concerned that it is sixth, seventh, eighth. You know, a sixth grader and a 12th grader in the same environment, I understand they don't see each other during the day, but they do. I don't want to name names, but there were people who were seventh graders who were dating 12th graders at the time, and I'm sure their lives changed at the trajectory of those kinds of situations they were putting themselves in unknowingly because they're kids. You know, a sixth grader seeing a 12th grader, you know, vaping, for example, may have a very strong input on how they may deal with things. So I was wondering if you guys were planning on, you know, moving the middle school, you know, if, for example, all the kids got moved to another location? So I was just wondering if that was also part of the plan of, you know, what was going to happen? Just something to think about, because I really do think sixth graders with 12th graders, it just, it's, I don't know, it makes me very uncomfortable. It's just my truth. And again, I know my daughter is three, but like you said, it takes time, so I want to make sure by the time that she is there, she is safe. Forgive me, sorry. Also, I know that they said that for the redistricting, there's going to be staggered times, so I was just wondering if there's a child that, you know, is older and, you know, a much younger child, how is a parent going to be able to be taking care of both kids? Every time I talk to somebody about these situations, they always say, "Well, I'm planning on putting my kid in private school, but I want to keep my kid here." So these things are really, really important to me, and I want to make sure that they're addressed. I understand that, you know, nothing is built in a day, but I want to make sure that, you know, my daughter is in the right, safe environment. And, you know, I'm just hoping that's something you guys consider. The middle school issue is something I'm really, really worried about. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to try my best to answer all your questions. I don't have answers to some of them, but as far as used to construct, that was a question you asked. So the process is a pretty comprehensive one, you know. Eventually, we come up with a plan, what a referendum would look like, then we submit it to the Department of Education, we have to get approval. It takes about six months to get approval. Then we decide on a date that the community will vote on it. Throughout this time, we're in constant communication with the community, letting them know the pros and cons, and just educating the community as a whole. And then from there, we go out to vendors, we go out to bids, et cetera, getting, make sure we have supplies and all that. And then an average construction project, usually it's about two years, because construction we're limited to, especially in New Jersey, is mostly the summer, is the warmer months. So that's just roughly what it would look like. Again, depending on the size of if there's construction, what it would look like, those are all variables that we can't account for at the time, but that's just roughly what it normally would look like. As far as sixth grade, this is something that, you know, we've also been in conversation with, we have heard the community. When we're talking about expansions, it's something that we would love to entertain the fact that somehow we could figure out a way to have sixth grade come out of the middle school, high school. Again, this is a wish that we would like, you know, we heard of the community, you're not the first one that has come to us, so that is something that we're looking to see if there's a possibility forward, but yes, we are aware. And if we can, that's something we would definitely look into. Where construction, that's where the architects, engineers come in. We have been to all the buildings just to have an idea of what possibilities are. You know, as far as something solidified, we don't have anything solidified. You know, it's something that we're going to be also in communication with the mayor and town council to have their perspective on it as well. And staggered times, yes. We're definitely looking for staggered times. We're in the middle of, middle, towards the later half of finishing our transportation audit of what the projected would look like. Since we're pushing it back to 2025, now it would look a little different also because now we're pushing students into two years academically, so some students who normally would have been in Huber Street towards fifth grade, now it's middle school, so busing, we're kind of starting from scratch after this announcement. But we are definitely looking for staggered times. Also, one thing we don't have currently in the district that we're looking to start implementing is a longer breakfast program. So we will be able to open our doors 30 minutes earlier than the start time. That right off the bat will give parents a 30-minute window to get from building to building. So we considerably factor in a 10-minute stagger time plus a 30-minute breakfast program. We're looking at 40 minutes now you will get from one elementary school to another. So the breakfast part, that's the part that we've already figured out, we could cover that 30 minutes earlier in the morning. As far as staggered times, once we have our bus audit and our report in place, that we can really figure out how much we can stagger. But safely say, we have those 30 minutes covered, so hopefully that's some insight. We're working on it. I think I covered most questions? Okay, thank you.
Board member comments?
I'd just like to announce that there is a CHIOP hockey program in town. We are with C-Caucus, Carney and North Arlington, and they are a six-year young varsity program, and last night they captured their second McMullen Cup championship win. I'd just like to congratulate them.
Congratulations to them. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. [end of transcript]